This conference will now be recorded.
How you doing, Ed?
Good. Yourself?
Good. I always get confused on which one I'm supposed to log in and I logged into the executive session one, but I realized I had to get on this one first and then get on the executive session.
They're separated by three minutes. And we're now doing the regular session first with the executive session second. So login to the one that says.
Yeah, I logged into this one.
Sporting my new mask today.
I see that.
They're pretty cool.
Where'd you get that one from?
The high school girls basketball booster.
Oh, okay.
They're selling them and, and this one.
Where they, where they sell them up at low? So where?
No, there was a email came around with an order form.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know, you'd probably have to look up girls basketball booster club, lady Vikings, something. I don't know.
Got it.
Nicole, you want to order some? She can make it happen.
I was gonna sell one to Erin, but she said I'd already breathed in it and she didn't want it.
What a bling, yeah.
First, mayor, safety first.
Did someone say masks? Is that right there? There's 5,000 three ply masks right there.
Yeah.
There you go.
They're not the fancy Lago Vista.
Yeah, do they look like this?
No.
Paul's kids have markers and paint. They can design it however you want to. Also a new program.
Don't encourage sniffing paint, sir.
All right, it's, it's time for our kickoff.
You got Frank. We don't have an Al and Dan. We got Don. You just make up an Al.
Don has this perplexed look on his face like what the hell's the mayor doing?
As close as we're gonna get to football.
Exactly right. You nailed me. I was hoping you weren't gonna wear a mask in a room by yourself for the whole meeting.
Paul put on a gas mask for a meeting?
All right, who are we missing? Don, David, Arch.
We're missing Tim Collins and.
Tim and Dick.
Tim and Dick.
And Tim will not be in the meeting.
That's right. So we're missing Dick. He's probably in the executive session.
Probably.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and kick it off then. All right, here we go. Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, July 16th, 2020 at 6:01 PM as prescribed by VTCA Government Code Section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda items. Uh, let's see, do we have Sandra with us tonight? Yes, I do. Sandra, please note, we have everybody except for Tim Collins. And I still don't see Dick Weatherly. So Tim and Dick are absent. Uh, we will begin with the executive session. Number one, we will convene into a closed executive session pursuant to sections 551 dot 071 Advice of Council, 551 dot 072 Real Property, 551 dot 074 Personnel, Section 551 dot 087 Economic Development, Texas Government Code and Section 1 dot 05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding A, Consultation with Legal Counsel and Possible Action Concerning Any Regular Meeting Agenda Item Requiring Confidential Attorney Client Advice Necessitated by the Deliberation Or Discussion of Said Item as Needed. And B, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Additional Water Service Charge Category For Water User, Users Located Outside Our City Limits or in our ETJ. At 6:03 PM. Audience will be back in a few. First in.
We're in the stairs, Seffy.
Look at that. They're coming in like hotcakes now.
Hey, there's Dick Weatherly.
Relax, he's here.
What's going, what, Dick? We can't hear you, Dick.
And you were counted absent at the council meeting.
Hello?
Hello?
There's Arch.
All right, let's see. There's Arch. David, Dick, Frank, Miss and Don.
Mayor reminder, once you get started back up to remind everyone to mute. And then once the man needs to speak, we'll make sure we unmute ourselves.
Will do.
Is Sean Snyder going to be on this one?
Mayor.
I'm on the line.
There you go.
All right, well, I'm assuming Donald will join us here in a little bit. I'm going to go ahead and reconvene. All right, so, action item. Number two, reconvene from executive session into open section to act as deemed appropriate in city council discretion regarding A, we reconvene at 6:37 PM. A consultation with legal counsel. And with, and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item. No action. B, consultation with legal counsel regarding additional water service charge category. And also no action. Sandra, please note that Dick Weatherly was in attendance for the council meeting. He was just at the wrong login, so he was present. So the only one absent for the council meeting is council member Tim Collins. So, an announcement. During the session, if you are not speaking, please mute yourself. We have, we have problems with feedback at times and it just creates a whistling static noise for everyone trying to listen. So if you're not actively speaking, please mute yourself and then unmute yourself if you have something to, if you're called on to speak or if you have a, want to raise your hand to make a comment or something. And we will go into citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. I have one person who has submitted a form prior to the meeting that would like to make a comment, and that would be Paul Roberts. So at this time, I'll recognize Paul Roberts.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. I would like to request that the council, that you put an agenda item up on the next council agenda for the discussion of adding citizens to a P and Z subcommittee that is currently comprised of three members and was created last week on July 9th for the purpose of reviewing the June 11th agenda item pertaining to the chapter 14, section 13.20 D and E, which prescribes for the process for changing the zoning on a piece of property. I feel that the citizens who had a voice in creating the city's comprehensive master plan that the city spent $150,000 on in a solid year and had many town hall meetings and 16, I think it was 16 total individuals who participated in the creation of that document in the future land use map, that there be some balance in that subcommittee. And I'd like to see if you guys would consider adding an agenda item to the next council meeting for the purpose of selecting three citizens, and I would like to be one of them, to be added to that present, that three-person subcommittee right now, which currently consists of Richard, Tom, and Larry.
That's all. All right, we can look at adding that.
I would like to second that as well, adding that amendment as well. This is Gerald Dosbach. If I can say that. I'd like to second what Paul's doing there.
All right, well, right now, I've, I've recognized this Paul.
Okay, well. Thank you.
All right, is that it, Paul?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Okay, so Paul was the only one that I had signed up previously. Now, if there's anybody else in the audience who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or let me know somehow. So Gerald Dosbach, at this time, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Paul just explained. I'd like to see a committee and add it to the agenda for next week's meeting.
All right. Thank you. Yes, I recognize Justin Boone.
Appreciate it, thank you. Not going to go through the whole spiel again. Same thing Gerald and Paul just said. Like to, like to see that added as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, anybody else? All right. Z, is there any citizen comments on, on any other subject? All right, we will move forward into items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items. Expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences. Information regarding holiday schedules. Recognition of individuals. Reminders regarding city council events. Reminders regarding community events. And health and safety announcements. One, I would like to express my thanks and gratitudes for the Fourth of July council and the staff and everybody that was involved in the fireworks show. Considering the environment we, we are in right now. It was a, it was a nice reprieve to sit there on a Saturday night and, and watch the fireworks and listen to Lago radio. And so, thank you to everybody that had a hand into the, in the fireworks show. Number two, community events coming up August 1st and 2nd, I believe are the dates. We have another free COVID-19 testing drive, I guess you call it. And it will be at K Oaks this time. ESD 1, working with the State Department of Emergency Management, is able to secure a team like we had previously to come out and do testing again. But this time, it's going to be at K Oaks. I think that's, I'm pretty sure it's going to be indoors. Just because of the heat and everything. So that'll be very nice. So anybody that you know that wants to get tested, please let them know it'll be August 1st and 2nd, K Oaks. And you'll see advertisements everywhere. And third, community event. Please pass the word. We need to fill out our census. I think the state is running, the last I saw, the state was running about 60% complete. And Lago was in the bottom three cities of the state at like 26%. For some reason, nobody in this city wants to fill out the census. But that is, can be very important, especially if we have incidents like this where some of our funding from the federal government stuff is based on population. We need to have as accurate account as possible. There's a There's a multitude of reasons, but I'll just throw that one out there. So in your conversations with people, please pass on the word to fill out the census report. Anybody else? I'm sorry, let's see, is that Steven Surick, correct? Who's, who's speaking? All right. I'm sorry, Steven, like, we, we couldn't, we couldn't hear you. If you could go to the chat box up on the right-hand corner, you can open up the chat box and send us a message, and I can pass it on at a later time, since we were unable to hear you. Does anybody else have anything? Council staff? All right, we will go into what am I doing with my paper? All right, action item. Item number three. Discussion consideration and possible action regarding resolution number 20-1848, resolution approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a prelimin, preliminary limited offering memorandum for City of Lago Vista, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Refunding Bond taxable series 2020A to Serra on Lake Travis Public Improvement District, Major Improvement Area Project and City of Lago Vista, Texas Special Assessment Revenue and refunding, refunding bonds tax exempt series 2020B to Serra on Lake Travis Public Improvement District, Major Improvement Area Project. Let me go to my packet here.
Mayor, I wanted to point out that you do have Bart, Tom, Trip, Jaclyn, and Darlene are all on right now, and they have access. So any of those questions that would go to those individuals, you'll see all of those are tied in and, and airing.
As well as John on the line.
All right, so at this time, I am going to turn it over to them and let them address council on this agenda item. Who's going first?
Mayor, I'm happy to go first. This is Bart Fowler with McCall Park, Kirsten Horton. As always, happy to serve you all as bond counsel. We talked about this last week. At that point, we let you know that there was a concern with some of the prior documents from 2012 that we need to look into. We took the time to look into those, realized the concern that we had was more limited in scope than we thought. It only implied in a limited situation that did not occur, so we can move forward with the current plan that, that we thought. We went through the analysis, we went through the prior agreement, we talked with the city attorney, we talked to underwriters council, we talked to the developers council. I'd make sure they all understood it and agreed with how it was read, and everyone did. Everyone was comfortable with it with moving forward, primarily with a piece where we're considering reimbursement for acquisition of right-of-way. That's, that has been resolved at this point, so the issue we discussed last week is no longer an issue. So the item tonight, the resolution in front of you, is approving the offering memorandum, distribution of the offering memorandum to potential investors. This, again, has been reviewed by myself as your bond attorney, the city attorney. The other attorneys I've mentioned have reviewed it as well and commented on it. The city itself has looked at it to confirm the information regarding the city is correct. The other documents, there are a lot of exhibits attached to it. Those, you are approving the form of them tonight. They'll come back to you at the bond sale next week for final approval and actually approve the agreements at that point. Tonight is just the form, so they can go out and market the bonds. Trip Davenport is the underwriter for these bonds. He can explain the marketing process if you have any questions about that. But the action tonight is just to get this document out so investors can review it, consider their, whether they want to invest on this, in this or not, and we will come back on the 23rd to you to actually approve it and sell the bonds, price the bonds, authorize the bonds at that meeting. Trip, or Tom, you may want to have some things you want to add, but that summarizes essentially the action in front of you tonight.
I can point everyone to the numbers. We actually went over them last week. There are two major improvement area bond issues. The reason for that is that one being taxable, the other being tax exempt, the tax law changed back in 2017 and disallowed advanced refundings, meaning refundings that occur more than 90 days before the redemption date. And so we split it into a taxable and tax exempt piece. Taxable rates are attractive enough to proceed on that basis. Obviously, tax exempt rates are even better, obviously. Anyway, that's why we have two MIA bond issues, one taxable, one tax exempt. And then, of course, we have the IA1 bonds, which is the first improvement area, and all of those, all of the bonds, all of the MIA, all of the IA1 bonds are being refunded by these offering documents that are going out and that will lead to the sale. Your approval would be required, obviously, but that's scheduled for a week from tonight. So the pricing would be next week, probably Thursday morning. And, and then by Thursday, for your, your meeting, we would have all the documents ready. Bart and Jaclyn will have all the bond documents, and of course, underwriters council will have the bond purchase agreement ready for your approval, and that basically locks everything up. And then Bart and Jaclyn will submit the transcript to the Attorney General's office for approval, and we would close a few weeks later. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the numbers. We did go over them last week. They're basically the same. The only change I made was the closing date was, I moved it from August 13th to August 19th. Nobody has countered that, so I'm assuming that's going to be our closing date at this point.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Trip, did you have anything to add?
Yes, sir, appreciate the opportunity to serve as underwriter on this. We'll be hopefully getting approval tonight, and we'll post the documents and work with, you know, large institutional investors over the weekend to get them up to speed on the transaction, and then look for a successful financing on, on Thursday.
I have a general question for whoever wants to reply. With the environment that we, we're in now, how are, how are these bond sales going?
So, this is Trip Davenport with FMS. We priced some transactions earlier this week, and a little bit different credit than this, these transactions. But they were the lowest yielding pit bonds ever done for a raw land transaction. So there's a lot of investor appetite. And we, we, we think that we'll have a really successful sale, assuming nothing happens between now and, and Thursday, which in the, the new world we live in, that, that's asking a lot sometimes, but hopefully here in the next week, we'll have a good marketing period and, and get really good interest rates on these bonds.
Good, thank you. Frank, did you have a question?
Yes, is John Snyder out there?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Hey, John. Are you okay with this deal?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, I, we've, I've looked through the, and I'm, I'm just talking in terms of the numbers, in terms of the policy, that's, that's all up to you, but in terms of, are the numbers working and is the plum accurate? I've gone through it all and, and everything checks out.
Thanks.
Anybody else on council?
I'm good.
All right, well, at this time, I'll open it up to the audience to see if anybody from the audience has any questions or comments. Yes, Ron Smith.
Do these briefings? Do these refunding bonds act the same way as municipal bonds? Is, what I mean by that is, once you go through the refunding, the bondholders, because they're getting less interest, are going to want to have that interest payment for some period of time before you can pay them off early. So I guess the question is, is there a prepayment penalty for Tassera on Lake Travis? And, and do these things lock them for a period of time before they can begin to pay down interest in the future?
Ron, the, the, these bonds, these are municipal bonds, but they're not
I'm talking, but I don't hear them.
These are not general obligation bonds. These are special revenue bonds payable only from the assessments on the property. So it's a different kind of municipal bond than the city typically issues for general projects, utilities, and otherwise streets and roads improvements that are backed by your app alarm tax. That's a general obligation. These are not general obligations of the city, but they're still considered municipal bonds. They still qualify for tax exemption generally. But because of the, the fact that one of them is refunding older bonds in advance of their call date, which does not occur until September of 2021, that piece has been carved out and is being done on a taxable basis. That's a taxable municipal bond. These bonds, as is typical with bonds that are publicly offered, carry 10-year call protection. That means that the new bonds, just as any new bonds are issued, have call protection, meaning the investors will not have to be concerned with their bonds being called prior to that, that redemption date, which is set at approximately 10 years from now. That's the same as it was, for the most part, with the original bonds that were issued. They did have a staggered call date, though. Pit bonds are a little bit different in that regard, but the standard call feature is 10 years, eight to 10 years. These are, these are, I believe, Trip, unless I'm mistaken, I'm pretty sure we haven't said it 10 years.
That's, that's right, Tom. In addition, council member, there's a, there's no prepayment, there's no prepayment penalty.
Right, there's no, no prepayment penalty, and the reason that there is call protection is if you make the call date too soon, you will pay a penalty in terms of interest. Without a certain amount of call protection in there, you'll end up with a higher interest rate. So it's customary, you'll see a customary kind of semi-lengthy period of time where they're not callable. Now, there is a, there's some, there's pending legislative proposals out there to bring back advanced refundings. And that means that you would be able to issue tax exempt advanced refunding bonds more than 90 days prior to the call date. Oftentimes, you'll see that two to three to even four years prior to the call date, you'll, you'll find savings available for doing an advanced refunding. So even though they're not callable for 10 years, there's a fair chance you'll see them, you'll see, see advanced refunding bonds replacing them, but they'll remain outstanding, only payable from treasuries that are in an escrow, but they'll be off your balance sheet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else from the audience? All right, well, at this time, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 20-1848.
All right, I have the motion from Dave Williams and the second from Dick Weatherly. Any further discussion? All right. I don't have everybody's picture, so I can't go by show of hands. I'll go by voice. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, hearing done, motion carries unanimous. All right, we will go into agenda item number four, public hearing. The city council of the City of Lago Vista is holding a public hearing to consider the levy of additional asset assessments, MIA supplemental special assessments against the benefited property within the major improvement area of the Tassera on Lake Travis Public Improvement District, known as the district, for paying the cost of certain improvements to be made within the major improvement area of the district pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code as amended. And I will open the public hearing at 7:01 PM. And we will start with staff presentation. So I'll turn it back over to staff for this one.
Bart, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. Again, this is Bart Fowler and McCall Park, Kirsten Horton. This item, you may recall that we're required to publish a notice in the newspaper about a hearing that's required by statute to levy the additional assessment on the major improvement area. It is just to cover that new money piece that we've been discussing at some length. The main purpose of this hearing is to make, let any property owner within the major improvement area know about the, the potential for the new assessment, the additional assessment, because they would be the ones that would be paying it, and give an opportunity to come and speak for or against the assessment. That publish has, the, the notice has been posted in the newspaper for July 16th, which is tonight, obviously. Unfortunately, we don't have all the information needed to let property owners speak for or against the assessment. That comes at pricing. And it says pricing has been delayed until the 23rd. It's, it's appropriate to open the public hearing tonight, as you just had, just have done. If anyone would like to speak, they certainly should speak tonight if they want. But then it would not be appropriate to close the public hearing, keep the public hearing open. You can move on to the next item, which will delay the public hearing, keep it open until next Thursday. When you reconvene, we'll keep the public hearing open then. People can speak at that point, knowing what the full numbers are after pricing, and close the public hearing at that time. So we did have a public hearing tonight, but keep it open until next, next Thursday.
All right, thank you. So anybody on council that has any questions at this time? Yes, Dick?
Yes, Bart. This special assessment, this will be something extra that the people at Tassera are paying above and beyond their assessment right now. But with the refinancing, then they will have a lower assessment as we go into the future?
There, a couple of different, different things going on there. What you're referring to is for the lower assessment are the people within improvement area, number one. That's this other series of bonds that's being issued to refund the existing debt on that improvement area. That's separate than this new assessment. This new assessment is only levied on the major improvement area that's remaining out there, that's entirely owned by the Heinz entities. There are no residential assessment payers in the area that's getting this new assessment. If Darlene's here, she can speak that a little bit, but this is just on that new area. As someone, as that's developed, as you get homeowners in there, yes, they will be paying the assessment at that time. But currently, it's just on the land that this, this is, that's being assessed with this assessment is only owned by Heinz and not, not the existing payers. The existing rate assessment payers aren't going to be paying more because of this.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to hear.
Anyone else? All right, if that's it for council. It's public hearing, so I'll open it up to the audience to see if anybody else has any, has any comments at this time.
How much? Where, where is this assessment area located?
All right.
I've been away for a while, so I'm a little not up to date on all of the details.
All right, Mr. Surick, this is in the subdivision
All right, Mr. Surick, this is, uh, in the subdivision of Tassara, Lakeside at Tassara.
I see.
Is that, is that, is that good, or do you need more details on?
No, no, no. That, that tells me where it's at, yeah.
Yes, uh, Tassara is the only subdivision that we have that is currently a PID. Um, so whenever you see us talking about PID documents and, and things like that, it always deals, at this moment, it's always with Lakeside at Tassara.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sir. Anybody else in the audience? All right. Well, if there's no more questions or comments, then I will leave the public hearing open at this time, and we will move to action item number five. And that is discussion, consideration, and possible action on resolution number 20-1850, resolution delaying action on the public hearing to consider the levy of special assessments against property in the Tassara on Lake Travis Public Improvement District, major improvement area to pay certain costs, providing an effective date, and resolving other matters, incident, and related thereto. As Bart stated, under item number four, we have an executive session, I mean, a special call session scheduled for next Thursday, and that is when they will come back with the numbers and everything, and allow the public to see the numbers and make their comments. And Bart, is there anything else you would like to add to?
No, no, Mayor, no. I think that, that covers it. I, I will say that this, this item, uh, is done, for the most part, to let the property owners, give them formal notice that the hearing's been, been delayed until next week, as well as the, uh, Tom mentioned, the Attorney General Review Process. They look at these very closely, and they'll appreciate you taking formal action to let everyone know that you have, uh, kept the, uh, hearing open, delayed it until the 23rd. Uh, so there's something about suspenders with this, but it will make it the process smoother.
Questions, comments from council?
So, Mr. Mayor, we're just making a motion to approve this on July 23rd. Is that what we're doing?
Make it, it'll be a, the potential motion could be to delay until the 23rd.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? All right. How about anybody in the audience? Questions, comments on this delay? All right. If there's no further discussion, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we delay action until next Thursday, July 23rd, when all the numbers will be available.
Councilmember Williams, are you, is your motion to approve the resolution, delaying the hearing?
To approve the resolution, delaying the hearing until next Thursday, July 23rd.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Frank, did you have something?
No, maybe he did a punch.
No, okay. All right. So I have the motion. I have a second. I have a second from Dick Weatherly. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimous. And we now go into our consent agenda. Uh, before I go into a consent agenda, all those that were with us tonight, um, I'm assuming you will be logging out now, so I would appreciate your attendance, and we will see you again next week. Consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have one item, that is the approval of our June 3rd, 2020 special call budget meeting, and the June 4th and June 18th, 2020 regular city council meeting minutes. Questions, comments? All right. Anybody from the audience have any questions, comments on the consent agenda? All right. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right. I have the motion from, uh, Councilman Weatherly and the second from Councilman Davila. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved unanimous. Now we'll go into discussion items. Item number seven, discussion concerning the City of Lago Vista Water Conservation and Reuse Plan. And let me pull up number seven. All right. It has the lead as Josh Ray. Josh, are you gonna lead this, or um, or one of the, uh, subcommittee members want to lead this discussion?
Mayor, I'd pass it over to Councilor Robbins.
All right. Councilman Robbins, you have the floor.
Mayor, I, I don't have really much to add, other than what's in the back of, uh, which is, uh, the basis for following the LCRAs, uh, water conservation plan and fix six articles, uh, related to that.
All right. So we're currently at stage one, correct?
Yes.
Now, our stage one is more restrictive than, uh, what LCRAs is at the moment?
Yes.
So our stage one basically is one day a week.
No, two days a week.
Two days a week.
Okay. And what would it be under the LCRA plan?
No restrictions.
No restrictions.
It has to do with the lake level. LCR has a voluntary, uh, set of standards at 1.4 million acre feet in Buchanan and Travis, and they, they describe that as voluntary. Their mandatory requirements don't begin until 900,000 acre feet.
Well, that's, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm the drought plan, and that's our, our threshold, too, is the 900,000 gallons. It's just that all we did in that drought plan was cut out. Instead of making stage one voluntary, we made stage one mandatory. I don't understand why we have a problem with leaving our drought conservation plan alone, and anything above 900,000 would be voluntary watering. You water when you need to. That would be normal watering. Unless LCRA decides to say to us, we need to conserve, uh, mandatory watering, similar to what we have in stage one, I don't see why everything else above 900,000 gallons can't just be normal watering. Someone needs to explain why we need to have different tiers. I mean, from where we are right now until 900,000 gallons, everyone could just water how they need to order, if I'm reading this correctly.
I think some of it may be with our capacity, too, uh, and it depends on your city. Cause I know, like, Austin just entered into their stage one restriction, and their stage one limits everybody to one day a week. Um, but I think that's, I don't know if that's based on some trigger point they have, or it's just based on their, their system to be able to process water. But I know Austin just, just went into a stage one restriction for them. So I think it depends, again, some on your, on your system as well. Yes, Dick?
The water conservation plan that we now have in place, when we enacted it, uh, before LCRA even had a water conservation plan. LCRA did not implement or put a water conservation plan into effect until a year after we did.
No, that's correct.
If you look at the water conservation plan in the package, you will see it as a 2019 water conservation plan. Look at the date on the front page. It was not in effect when we were doing our water conservation plan. When we gave them our water conservation plan, the people that we were talking to and dealing with said that they would use our plan as the example. Now, as a council, we decided to implement stage one, which is the two-day-a-week watering to conserve water. Now, if we do not want to conserve water, we simply take us out of stage one, and everybody in town can use as much water as they want to. But I would recommend that people look at the fact that on the news tonight, it said that we are going back into drought. There is drought just north of us, and the lake in the last 30 days has gone down four feet. We are not seeing a slow loss of water. We are seeing a very rapid loss of water. Now, I know Frank's attitude is we use it or lose it. But if we use it, it's gone. And it's my opinion that we should maintain ourselves in this community at a stage one, limiting the water to twice a week. That's doing a nice job of keeping my yard green. And I like a nice green yard. Now, if we don't want to do any type of water conservation, all we have to do is tell Josh to eliminate the stage one restrictions. Then everybody in town can use water any way they want to. But stage one, we put at 140,000 acre feet, or 1.4 million acre feet, because as you get there, things start going down quickly. So.
So our, this acre feet that they set their trigger points on, is this just for Lake Travis, or is this combined?
No, it's combined Lake Travis and Lake Buchanan.
Okay, cause I'm looking at the email from LCRA today. Uh, combined, we're at 1.722 million, uh, but Travis is at that 907, so I was just wondering if, you know, if we were approaching 900.
Combined, combined volume of the two lakes.
Yes, Frank.
Couple of points, and I've got our current ordinance in front of me. Uh, it was noted earlier that we're in stage one. That's incorrect. Our, our, our ordinance at normal water storage conditions exists when the combined storage of Lake Travis and Buchanan exceeds 900,000 acre feet. Okay, so we're in normal according to our standards. And that's the point that we're trying, that, that I'm trying to make. Most of the time, we're above 1.4 million. That's, and that's where we are today. However, we have to, we have water restrictions all the time now. It was also made that we did not have, that LCRA did not have a drought contingency plan until 2017. That's incorrect. Uh, they pulled together the plan, uh, out of the 2011. Ron probably remembers, I think, the first ordinance that we approved was probably 2012. And it was almost verbatim the model that LCRA gave us.
So have we had a large, or, I mean, have we had a request or demand from citizens to be able to, to water more than two days a week? Does anybody know?
Mayor, typically, typically, we receive requests only on new lawns. And what I would say is that's, uh, typically what we're seeing is if someone replants their lawn, they're asking for the variance, which can't be approved administratively. Uh, but I, I believe that's based on the fact that people are trained to know what our ordinance is, and they're not submitting these new requests.
Yeah, cause I do know historically, when we came out of that last drought, people had gotten so used to not watering that, um, you can see our water usage over the years, and it hasn't gone up, uh, even with being able to water two days a week. People just aren't even, people still aren't watering two days a week. They're doing one day. So I'm just wondering if it's, if we really need to just open it up so they can water anytime. Yes, Art?
I'd like to make the point that if we're not restricting anyone from, uh, watering at, um, at the level where we are right now, what harm is there then in going to water conditions, which allows people to water anytime that they want to, as much as they want to? I believe the statement that, uh, Councilor Robbins was making was that the trigger point that we have right now for stage one is 900 acre feet of water. Is that not right?
Stage one is below 900,000.
Right, but the trigger point for stage one is 900,000.
Below, yeah, below 900. Actually, the ordinance says below 900,000 for 30 days.
30 days, exactly.
With LCRAs plan. LCRA doesn't, it just says when it gets to 900,000, you have to start its mandatory restrictions.
So Mayor, I'd like to make this point. I know that I've had neighbors ask me why we're in this, uh, this particular situation where we don't have normal water conditions. If we're gonna throw it open and it doesn't have any effect, then, you know, there's no, um, no loss at all. No foul, no gain, in other words.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't have, I don't, I can't say that I have an issue with opening it up. I'd, so long as our system, which I'm pretty sure is quite adequate with treatment plant one and three, uh, long as, long as we don't get in a situation that's taxing our systems, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, the point that I would add would be that if we get into a drought situation, those trigger points are going to kick in anyway. So I don't see really why we're, you know, bucking the system here.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Well, if that's all with council, I do have some citizens. One has signed up previous part of the meeting to speak, uh, and that is Ron Smith. So at this time, I'll go ahead and recognize Ron Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. All right. Seems like I have to do this every time. I get the impression the council doesn't care about conservation. If it's there, water all you want to water. The lake has not always been over 1.4 million acre feet. It has lately, it has in the last few years, but over the last decade, it's been well below that. It was just above 600 acre feet in 2014. It was just above 600 acre feet in 2014. I'm really not sure why you're trying to do this unless you want to water your yards more than twice a week. Twice a week seems to be enough to keep everything alive. And the plans were set up to look when the lakes are in drought and when the lakes are full and everything in between, trying to write a set of rules that do all that. The reason why the twice a week watering is in place even when the lake is full is because we took out that 1.4 million acre feet threshold and then added, where everybody else is going to once a week, we stay at twice a week to provide stability to the homeowners. So they're not constantly going out to their irrigation systems and setting and resetting the system every time the lake goes up and down. So the intention was, is to make a long term plan that would operate favorably for the citizens and the businesses without having to constantly go out and reset and set and reset your sprinkler systems all the time. And I really don't know why this is coming up, other than a few people want to do this. I asked last time if you would check with Marble Falls and Burnet, because they did not change their ordinances. And they saw no change in outcome. Did anybody on the council check with Burnet and Marble Falls to see if I was correct? Because I gave you two data points to show where it's not going to make a bit of difference. It's going to make you feel good, but it's not going to make any difference. Now, are we talking about the drought plan? Are we talking about the conservation plan and reuse plan? Because the, the agenda said conservation plan and reuse, which was different than last time. So what are we talking about here?
It is the conservation and reuse.
Okay, so it's not drought, even though you have drought in your package.
No, I'm sorry.
You're not going to conserve water. I don't even know why you have a conservation plan, to be honest with you, because you don't care about conservation. A lot of time and energy went into creating those documents and understanding the system and understanding all the stakeholders from San Saba all the way down to the Gulf and everything in between. And now all of a sudden, because the lake happens to be up, you want to squander it. And I don't know why you want to do that. I've got some other comments to make, but they're on other plans. What do you want to do? I mean, I see something in the package here that says that Laguna Vista Golf Course doesn't take water from the lake. And that's not true. Generally, they take water from the lake every year, especially in summertime. But people say we don't take from the lake. We do. In fact, we have to take from the lake because you've got a darned water permit from L C R A that limits you to 110 million gallons a year, and you need 120 to run that Laguna Vista Golf Course. Has anybody checked the permits? The water permits with L C R A, have you checked with them? I suggest you do so. Because you're probably buying about 10 million acre feet in June, July, August, and September, just to keep those courses green. And that's in the reuse plan. But we're not, we haven't talked about reuse plan. We talked about people just sprinkling their yards. So what are we talking about? It's conservation, reuse, or drought? Which one are we talking about? Because there's three different problems.
Okay, I'll let council members address, and we'll get back to you, Ron. Yes, Frank.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. It's going to be interesting because I don't want to get an argument with Ron. I don't think anybody anywhere in this community knows more about water than Ron does. We've got a difference about policy issues. Let me talk about a couple of points he made. I have checked and double checked, and the Laguna Vista Golf Course does not get water counted at the lake. Is that correct, Josh?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We don't have a river, we don't have a river pump to the course.
Now, part of the summary in my backup had to do with the, with the article that's in chapter 13 that describes our standards for reuse water, which is the affluent water. I believe there are some issues with that ordinance that need to be fixed. I don't have a problem with the standards about when we trigger reuse conservation for the golf courses, which is two courses. There are just some technical stuff in it that I think need to be fixed. And that's why it's also labeled reuse. So the standards are okay, but there's some issues with the way it's written. For instance, it does call for watering restrictions on the golf course, on Laguna Vista Golf Course at lake levels. But it doesn't use water from the lake currently. So that's a fix.
All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, David.
You know, one, I think I'm in favor of conservation. I'm not against us conserving water. All right? Again, I, I do have a green yard, and I do water twice a week. And we still need, we're, we're going to run into a drought somewhere along the line here. Because all the years I've lived up here, we've always run somewhere into a drought stage where we have to conserve. I don't want people to lose that they have two days to water when we're in that stage, and I want them to keep that in their mind. Ron, this, this is, this is kind of a split council on conservation and normal watering. So it's not like I necessarily want to change the rules. If people want to relax the rules a little bit, and the, the city council manager, the city manager can implement our stage one whenever it's necessary. I'm fine with that. But to get rid of conservation, I'm not trying to get rid of conservation.
I'll get to you, Darcy. Arch, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just make the statement that I don't believe there's a single person on this council who does not favor conservation of water. That's just not, not even part of the equation, not part of the, the discussion here. It's all about loosening up the reins on water, going to normal water condition.
All right. Okay, Darcy, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Darcy DeVoe. Doesn't this make it, though, so people get kind of like waxy daisy, they get used to watering a lot, and it also is going to raise their bills, which makes you guys or the city more money? Is this about making more money for the city to spend it on other things? And so then you relax these policies, people get used to watering, they're letting the water run in the street, they're washing their driveways down. Because I'm from California, and I know drought, drought, and I know fires. That I do know. And when you relax those regulations, people get really crazy with the water. They start using it for all sorts of things. Their swimming pools, their lawns, their car, everything. And it's like, to me, it's like if you relax those rules and go to a full blown water what you want, do what you want to with the water, then when you have to go back into restriction, those people are, are like, hey, I don't want to say this, but screw you, city. I'm going to keep using what I want to because now I have a beautiful yard, and I'm not going to let my landscape, that's cost me 10 grand, go dead. And I'll just keep paying your higher water bill, which is now $400 a month. So I don't understand the point of relaxing it when, when the state, or the Travis County had said, within the next few months, we're going into a drought again. I moved here in the drought. I moved here when the lakes looked like a puddle. My house was so cheap in that time, because you were in a drought and the real estate market here took a nosedive. You have a real estate market because of the lake and golf. Okay, you dump both those things, and you're just going to get a bunch of dried up houses. So that's it. Thanks.
Well, you would, you would think that, Darcy, but our history has shown over time that when we came out of the drought and we put in this water conservation plan and our drought plan, and we set it so that people could water twice a week, we have discovered that even though our city has added about 20% of population, our water consumption has actually gone down. So people have not gotten reckless and, and.
And don't you think that's because of the price of the water bill? I mean, if you're using water, your sewage bill goes through the roof. Like, like other than a condo, we have exterior water that is only for watering the yard, but we get sewage on top of it. They're not flushing anything out in our front yard. It's just water. So when you use more water, that makes your sewage bill goes up. So you guys, the city makes more money. So whenever anyone uses more money, makes, uses more water, you guys are making more money. Correct?
So if they didn't use more water previously because of the rate, why would they do that now if the rates?
Because now you've relapsed it, and they think, oh, well, now I'm going to be able to water. Now I'm going to be able to put the big lawn in. Now I'm going to be able to, you know, build my swimming pool. Because, and they're going to also think that you're lowering the water cost, but you're not. Now, if you said, we're going to let you use more water and lower the water cost.
Then, then it might go up.
Yeah.
Like I said, like I said, when we relaxed it the last time, water consumption did not go up.
And that's because the water bills are so high.
Okay, so if we, if we relax at this time, it probably won't go up because their water bill would go up.
Then why relax it? Then what's the point of it? What, what's the point of, what, can you tell me what is the point of relaxing the water right now when we're going into a drought? What is the point of that, gentlemen?
I'll go ahead and, I'll turn it back over to the, to the subcommittee that has been studying this, and I'll let them address that again. I think they have addressed it, but I'll let them address it again. So Frank or Arch, if any of y'all would like to address that. Yes, Frank.
Yep, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to make two points. The subcommittee is dealing with rates, not water conservation.
Okay.
This, the second point I would make, and I think I haven't, have I sent the chat? Now I'm going to send it now. Mayor, I'm not going to argue back and forth with members of the audience.
Okay. Dick, did you have something?
Excuse me. Are you telling me, Frank, that you're thinking, oh, sorry, sorry, Dick, can I say something quick? Are you thinking, Frank, you and Arch?
Point of order.
I'm sorry. Dick, did you have something?
Arch called a point of order.
All right.
Need to answer to that.
Yes, I'd like to be able to say that this is not a discussion with the audience. We're not going to be debating this issue with the audience. This is all a discussion among council members. You don't, you don't just jump out there and say whatever you want, whenever you want. We have a rules of procedure that says you must be recognized before you speak.
Right. And I will, I will try to recognize them as best I can with this format. But I am going to allow the city, the audience to participate in the discussion. So, yes, Dick?
My final point on this, and I'll leave it at that. The system that we have is working. Our citizens are conserving water. We're doing what you need to do in central Texas. We don't have a drought right now. We've got lots of water. Great. Let's conserve it. Let's not waste it. Let's keep it for the next drought that's definitely coming. I think that we have a system that our citizens have gotten comfortable with, that they respect and they use. People that are unhappy with the amount of water that they're using are doing scene escaping. They're putting rocks in their yard. They're changing it so that they use less. I don't really think that changing this is going to make any difference in the income to the city from water. Our water rates are set so that we can maintain our infrastructure and provide our water and sewer to our citizens. We're not trying to do something to make more money. We don't need to make more money. We just need to keep the rates where they are so that we have the money to take care of things as they come up. But I do not see any reason to change the way that we're doing water conservation in Laguna Vista right now because it may be fat city right now, but the dry times are coming.
Thank you. Paul, I saw your hand go up. Did you have some comments?
Yes, sir. Hi. I envisioned like pouring a bucket of water over myself while I was talking about water. But anyway, just a quick question. I remember when y'all created the, the subcommittee, which Mr. Councilman Dobula is on. I don't recall any citizens being put on that committee, but if I'm not mistaken, I don't recall anybody asking to be on that committee. Am I mistaken?
No.
Does, does the council as a whole like to have citizens on subcommittees for matters of importance like this to the city?
Yes, I know. It just depends on the actual committee and what they're studying.
Just curious. That was all. Thank you very much.
Yes, Don.
So to throw my two cents in, I feel like we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And I like Laguna Vista being a leader in water conservation in central Texas. It's clearly important if you've been here more than years that you will know that that lake can turn into a moon crater really fast. So to change it without a clear purpose for changing it is a waste of time and energy. And, and then to have a two step process where what it looks like we're doing now to an outsider, you would think that we're trying to discuss relaxing the, the water conservation that we do voluntarily. And then the, the committee is together looking at adjusting the water rates, especially on the higher end is my understanding for that committee. So, because they don't want a punitive water rate, because we'd like to possibly encourage people to use a little bit more water, which is counterintuitive. And so, so I think both these items are completely undoing something that eight years of council through drought, we've, we've learned a lot. Ron Smith has learned a ton about the, the river system and we, we, we don't need to be cavalier about undoing all that hard work just because we've had a few good years with the lake. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else before we move on?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Is that all right?
Who am I speaking with?
This is Stephen, Stephen Surick.
All right, Mr. Surick, go ahead.
I had a few questions. First is, has anybody looked into how much water actually evaporates out of the lake? And how does that compare to the amount of water we use? The second thing is, has anybody looked into how much, how, how much water per person is being used by the other users of the water? Because if we are conserving, and by the way, I'm in favor of conservation, but if we're conserving and nobody else is, our efforts are sort of fruitless. But I think the evaporation of the water, natural evaporation, has to be taken into consideration. If we're, if the natural evaporation is 10 times, 20 times what we would use being, even though we ought to be conserve as a general rule, but the concern for. concern for, uh, being strict about conservation is sort of pointless. On the other hand, if it's not that way, then yes, we should, uh, very, you know, I agree with people who want to keep our watering, uh, in place. And then the last thing is, how many people are complaining about not having enough water? That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, you asked a question. I was actually trying to Google to see, um, evaporation from reservoirs is 25, 25% higher than Austin's total use. But I don't know what that number is. It just says 25% higher than Austin's total use. So I don't know what those numbers are.
Well, I don't know. There seems.
Ron can give you some information on that.
Ron, do you have?
I don't know what the total is for Lake Travis or for the combined storage. Alls I can tell you is that when you send 200,000 acre feet down the river to the rice farmers, it passes through six counties. You will lose approximately 50% of that water spread between absorption into the ground and evaporation. And it has to pass through six counties. So it travels about a county a day as the water goes from here down to the rice farmers and the estuaries down in Matagorda Bay. So, um, then that's just having it pass on the ground or in the river, what they call run of river.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, but didn't we say it fell so many feet within the last few days, a few weeks?
The, the rice farmers will get approximately 202,000 acre feet this year.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes, the lake has been going down, but I haven't been looking, I haven't been reading far enough down to see if that's, I think, I think they are releasing some to downstream. So, yes, Dick?
They are right now doing standard release. They're not doing any release down to the rice farmers at this point. But water goes through our dam every day. Uh, there has to be water passed through the system in order to create the water flow that's got to go into Matagorda Bay, maintain the estuaries and the, the ecology down the river. So there's water released every day. Water evaporates every day. And I can guarantee you that the lake did not go down four feet in the last 30 days because of water usage. Evaporation was definitely a big part of that. And it would be great if we could make everybody that's in the system conserve water and do their part. All we can do is do our part. We can conserve water here. We can't do a thing about Flugerville or Austin or Leander or Marble Falls or anybody else that's on the system. All that we can do here is our city, our people can serve the water that we can so that when there is a drought, we have water longer. And by having the system we have right now, the stress on our citizens when we go into drought is not as drastic.
All right. Thank you. So is that summed it up for everybody? Yes, Darcy. One more quick.
I just want to tell everybody, yes, you know, I get excited when I get upset. And I just don't like the idea that we have a subcommittee right now that is just three set, uh, council members that kind of went through that day and they are studying on raising our rates. And I wish they would have said that, like, hey, we're thinking of raising your rates again. Cause I could have sworn we just went through this, this last year about the water rates. And now, and now what is this new subcommittee studying? What are they studying?
Okay. Okay. So the subcommittee is separate from what we're discussing tonight. It just happens to be the same people that were, the same three members are discussing this one is on the subcommittee. And so I inadvertently referred to them as the subcommittee earlier. Uh, but this, the subcommittee is studying our water rate structure. Um, so it could, it, yes?
I'd just add, Mayor, that the subcommittee is actually the opposite, Darcy. They're actually studying the reduction of rates, um, opposite of what the study that was just completed earlier this year. So the subcommittee is actually going the opposite direction in terms of trying to reduce the water rates, uh, just for the matter of fact.
Yes. And that's what I was going to say. They're looking at the rate structure to see if they can re, you know, adjust it so that the rates actually go down. All right. I think we've discussed this one enough. If everybody's good, I think we should, yes, Frank?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what my next job is going to be. I think we got four, three to follow with L C R A. I know it's a close call. But the other issue is fixing, what I'm describing is fixing six other articles. And almost all of that is technical. Hasn't got anything, well, it's technical. Uh, and, and I would like to go to work to see if the council, the mayor of the council would allow us, allow me to go to work with the staff to bring back, because here's we have a four, three to go to L C R A and to fix the six articles.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with you going to work on it. I don't know the, the numbers. I tried not to, um, I try not to count the votes prior to anything. But, um, yeah, especially if you've got other, six other items that you want to get fixed. Cause even if it gets to council and the, the numbers go the, the other direction, three, four, we could still possibly adjust those, you know, change those six things. So, yeah, I don't see why you can't work with staff to bring back your proposal.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, Dick?
Um, I would suggest that you bring that back as two separate items. One item to change the current plan to the L C R A numbers, and then a second motion or second item to correct the six issues.
Okay. All right. So unless I hear any objection, we're going to move to discussion item number eight, which is discussion concerning the golf course advisory semi-annual report. And number eight, um, is going to be Mayor Pro Tim, Dick Weatherly.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this item is in our agenda simply to be presented, uh, and to be put on record for the citizens and for people to look at. Uh, our charter for the golf course advisory committee requires a semi-annual report into council. And this is that report. Uh, this has been sent out to all the members of the council. I have discussed some of the items with different members. Um, the golf course advisory committee has been working very hard on these issues. Um, there are some of these that are already being taken care of. There are a number of these that are being kind of snafu by the COVID right now. But the thing that I think is most positive out of this report is that they see a definite improvement of the golf course. We are seeing greater numbers of play. Um, we have not been getting revenue from the pro shop and the sales within the shop that we would like to see. But COVID has put a real damper on that. But the main thing we wanted to do was simply to put this into the record, have it available for everybody to see. And, uh, that's pretty much the presentation.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments on it? Frank?
Dick, uh, hey, it's a great report and I appreciate your leadership with, uh, with those folks. There's some great folks on that committee. And, and I agree with most everything that's in the document. There is one that I want to make a point of, uh, and it's something that Chip and I have gone through since we began this exercise. You may know which one I'm going to get to. It has to do with the marketing piece and effectively number four calls for billboards. And I'm the anti-billboard guy in town, I guess. And so I just, I'm opposed to that piece. Otherwise, it's some really good work. Thanks.
What did you see? Where'd you see billboards? I didn't see billboards. I saw signage, but I didn't see billboards.
You can't get it done with, if you read number four under marketing, uh, this program will include new directional signage in and outside, in and outside the community. Information slash marketing signage. I take that as a billboard and Dick's, you tell me what that is. If it's not billboard, good.
Can, can I, can I speak from the golf course advisory committee, please? This is Maja Linderman?
Hold on just a second, Maja. Let me, let me finish up with the council members and then I'll call you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from council? Josh, you have some comments?
Mayor, I wanted to add on to what Mayor Pro Tim said, just in terms of that report. I know he was talking about the revenues during COVID and the responses. One thing we do want to point out, the May-June revenues, those two months are the highest two months historically with the Laguna Vista Golf Course on the revenue side, $82,000 in, uh, in May, and then in June, $90,000 in revenue. So we are seeing, even if the, even if the clubhouse sales in terms of merchandise were down, the actual total revenues are the highest that we've seen. And those are, those are positive numbers and definitely the trend that we've talked about over time going in the right direction.
Right. And I saw the play was up like 350 plus rounds or something. So.
380.
380.
Mr. Mayor, I also would like to let people know that, uh, there's been a group of people that have been working very diligently in the pro shop to try to, uh, spruce it up and to get more merchandise out there on the floor for people to purchase. And they've been doing a great job, uh, in setting that up. So I think sales in the pro shop now that people can go in the pro shop, uh, will improve.
All right, Arch?
Yeah, this is a question for, um, Councilman Weatherly. When the discussion was about signage, was that possibly wayfinding signage or something else?
The discussion that Chip and I've had about it, and, uh, honestly, I don't remember us discussing it that much during an actual meeting. Uh, but, uh, wayfaring sign, signage was part of it. Uh, commercial signage that advertises the golf course, uh, coming into the city. Um, Frank's billboards are some type of signage, uh, to advertise the golf course. Uh, those were the things that we were talking about. Um, finding the golf course does not seem to be near the problem that it used to be because people can use their GPS now and it'll bring them right to it. If there's anything that we, I see that we really need signage on right now is telling people to stay off the par threes, stay on the golf cart paths, and some kind of big signage to tell them how to get from number nine to number 10. Everybody seems to get lost trying to get to the 10th hole. Uh, but the, the discussions that Chip and I had from his discussion with his council members, with his committee members were more along the lines of something that would advertise the golf course outside of the city or as you were coming into the city. And, uh, Maja may be able to, to speak more to that also.
All right. Well, if that's all at the moment, if that's, uh, Don, go ahead.
I'm just curious. I might've missed it in some discussion there. Had a, um, question about the rebuilding of the greens. Uh, my understanding, I haven't heard anything new about that, was that the, uh, the contractor backed out from the approval in January to rebuild two or three greens, five, six and seven? Where does that stand?
Mayor, if I can add. Rebuilding are coming in beautifully.
Yeah, I'll let Josh.
Yeah. So in that discussion with the council, after the council action, uh, we went back to the contractor. Contractor accepted the bid at the amount that they rebuilt the greens on five, six and seven. They built temporary greens. Uh, as of earlier this week, when I saw, uh, the greens, you could see, uh, the greens are coming in. The plan is for them to be ready for play in early to mid-August. So, you know, barring any kind of setback, I expect that those greens will be ready to play. And they actually, they look really good. Next challenge will be watching these greens over the next three to six months to see how they, uh, how they grow in successfully.
So that was a separate contractor that stepped in when the first one failed? They just stepped in and did the same price?
Mayor, yes. So the second, the first contractor had the price. The second one came in and assumed the contract price that was approved by council. Yes, sir.
And they were one of the original bidders?
Yes, sir.
What was that company called?
Couldn't tell you, but I will figure it out right now and let you know.
Theoretically, you might use them or not use them in the future according to how this turns out, right?
Mayor, and I think that's the whole point is to let these, to see how these greens go. So if council were to approve additional projects, we'd want to see if A, this company was a quality company, much like we're doing our street projects, and then B, to see if their method by which they rebuilt the greens was effective. And I think it's two plays there. One, their design, and two, their effectiveness.
Anybody else? Council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just want to let citizens know that they can go online and look at this golf course advisory report. It's, it is online. So.
All right. Thank you. All right. If that's all I have from council at the moment, I'll go ahead. Maja, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, all I want to say is regarding the signage that Frank was talking about, the signage was regarding keeping people in the proper places on the golf course, making sure they know which holes and where to go. And also signage when they're entering the community where the course is. And we do have some of those and those have been updated. And in our report, it does state that a number of things have already been accomplished. But we don't want billboards. That's not what we're looking for. And I just wanted to make that clear that we're not looking for great big giant billboards out in the middle of the countryside saying about Laguna Vista Golf Course. That was not the idea.
All right. Is there anybody else from the audience who would like to comment on the report? All right. Ron, as I see your name, hand up.
Uh, yes. Uh, one thing, one thing that's not being mentioned here is, um, I noticed that the expenses are going down. So I attribute that to Josh Ray and his staff for getting the expenses down. I didn't hear anybody say anything about that. Thank you, Josh.
Mayor, Ron's correct. Chris is doing a, a good job controlling those, those expenses. You know, that's been a debate here for years. Is, is it revenue issue or is it expenditure issue? And I say all the time, if there's ever a revenue shortage, then that means there's an expenditure issue. And, and if you don't have money in your pocket, but yet you're spending it, then that's, that's the concern. So I think you're seeing positive on both, both rounds.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we will move to agenda item number, discussion item number nine. Discussion regarding annexation and development agreement with Lago Property Development LP, including 380 economic development agreement. This is a discussion item. This is a opportunity for council members to discuss this proposal and what they see as missing and what needs to be changed. I know from me looking, just from me looking at this, to me, right now, the 380 agreement is not something that we should even be looking at because there's so much other stuff that needs to be done prior to this. Whether there's a development agreement, the annexation, going to planning and zoning for approval. There's several aspects of this project that need to be considered way before we even get into any kind of 380 agreement. So I'll turn it over to the council members and, and allow y'all to throw out what y'all see. And actually, before I go to, before I open it up to council, I'm going to ask my staff, either Roy or Aaron, to address what they have seen in this application and what they have discussed with the applicant.
Mayor, let me add one point before Aaron starts going. I did want to mention that Laura Lewis is on the meeting, just as we said on another item. So Laura's here, and she'll be discussing the items for the applicant. You'll see on her camera, although you can physically see her. She's also called in, so she can speak through the phone. So when council has questions, Laura will be able to hear you and respond after Aaron gives some feedback.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't, I don't know if you want to, before we start talking about the things that we think, maybe adjustments that need to be made, do you want to have a presentation from the applicant on, you know, what their proposal is? Because I think you'll get, that may generate some additional questions or comments.
Yeah, sure, that'll be great. And who's, is Laura doing that?
Yes.
All right, so Laura, if you would like to address council, you're recognized.
Can't hear you.
Laura, if you called in on the line, it is showing that the call-in is muted. I'm looking for caller number two.
I don't even see caller number two. All I see is four.
I see caller four. Okay, can you, Dave, can you unmute caller four to see if that'll allow Laura to speak? Try that now, Laura, please.
I think that might be me.
There you go.
I can hear you.
Excellent. I think, Josh, you have my presentation?
All right, I was muted. Dave, as soon as I pull this up from Laura, can you make me the presenter, please, sir?
All right, it shows you're the presenter, so whenever you're ready.
One second. Sorry, Mayor? Okay, I'm sharing the screen now, so you'll notice that it moves everyone around, so you'll just have to follow through. Laura, when you say next slide, I'll hit the next slide.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and present this presentation to you. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Walter's Wedding Estates. I know that you've had a wedding venue in your community before, and that venue was not representative of what Walters generally constructs, owns, operates. And it wasn't operated in a manner that aligns with Walters' core values as well. So we'd like to help you move past prior images you may have of wedding venues and tell you a little bit about Walter's Wedding Estates. Next slide. Walters is a first-class company with over 14 years' experience in the hospitality industry. Gentlemen, this is all we do. It's all we do every day. We currently own and operate 23 venues in Texas. And we have lodging at two of those locations. We have a boutique hotel in Denton. We also have kind of unique lodging in Spring Branch with a variety of casinos, lodges, and other housing. We've been successful, very successful, in lodging at our venues. We also have gone to zoning and are in the process of drawing up our construction documents. We've already rezoned and met our planning obligations to construct a rather large hotel, spa, and restaurant at our property called the Alana in Hickory Creek, Texas. On average, we host 130 to 140 events or weddings every month. And this includes specialty catering for each of these events. That means corporate events, weddings, whatever it is. They get to pick their menu, and we cater those events as well. They have, some of them have bars and happy hours included. We have over 250 employees in Texas working to manage, support, and grow this business. This isn't a side business for us, it isn't a part-time business for us, it isn't something we enjoy doing on the weekends. This is a real job for 250 people who work to support this business. Hospitality is our focus. We have no other business outside of this. Here's an example of the Alana in Hickory Creek. We'll soon be building a hotel that complements this, this facility. This facility also houses Walter's Wedding Estates corporate office. Next. This venue is Aristide Colleyville. It's in Tarrant County. Next. We call this venue Chapel Anavia. It's actually got two ballrooms and a chapel inside of it. Next. Hidden Pine Highland Village. This is a property we bought and converted into a wedding venue and constructed a chapel with it in a large ballroom. Next. Denton Milestone. I mentioned that we, that we have as one of our venues, it's got two outdoor venues. Next. Milestone Georgetown, a little closer to home for you all. We have a venue here, it actually has a second venue site that we will probably construct a second venue on next year. We're evaluating that right now. It has 13 acres with it. This is New Braunfels, a very similar venue. We've recently remodeled it, and it's got a beautiful outdoor ceremony site. Next. And actually, this is the ceremony site for the New Braunfels ceremony. Next. Remy's Ridge. This is in Spring Branch, just outside of Canyon Lake. Next. This is the outdoor, what some people call the backyard area, but this is the outdoor ceremony site of Remy's Ridge. And this is, we call this Hidden Falls. It actually has two venues and lodging, about 26 units of lodging at that location. Next. And here's the Wildwood Inn. It's a boutique hotel and venue that we own in Denton. And it was the original property that Keith Walters bought 14 years ago. Next. Here's some of our awards and recognitions, and I won't spend time on that, but next. And so I hope that introducing you to the type of product that we construct and build and own and operate will give you a little more comfort about what our vision is. When we say that we want a first-class luxury resort for Lago Vista, we actually mean a first-class resort. And we would accept nothing less, and we wouldn't expect you to hold us to a different standard than that. And so I hope seeing what our products look like helps, helps with that understanding. We have, we have a proposal for Nature's Point, and we propose, we actually have a two-to-three-phase construction process. So the first phase, we'll start with two venues. And our venues include large ballrooms with restrooms, a commercial kitchen, brightened room suites, sometimes in-law suites, and staff offices. There'll be two outdoor ceremony sites, two restaurants. And then our logic will come in two phases. Cabins and villas in the first phase, and then a hotel with a spa in the second phase. And so, next page. So this is an, this is a site plan for our Phase One. And the yellow boxes represent the location of the two venues that will later be integrated into the hotel suites, right, to the hotel site. And then there are also cabins and villas. And I'll explain these a little in greater detail. I know there's some curiosity around what we plan to do there. And so I'd like to describe what the villas, what we intend for the villas to look like, and also kind of explain our plan. So we imagine that the villas will be there temporarily, two to three years. And they, they are constructed to be removed, they'll be built on skids. They, they'll be removed, and we already have places for them. So for example, our Georgetown, our Bernie, and our New Braunfels venues have several acres. And so, yes, Mayor?
You're speaking of the villas, but I think what you mean to say is the cabins, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. I did mean to say the cabins, and if I said villas, I apologize. So the cabins that are closer to the top of the property, those will be there temporarily. They will not be built for just to last two to three years. They'll be built to last 30 years, and they'll be removed after the two-to-three-year period so that we can construct the hotel. And we'll relocate them to our other properties where we already have a need for that. And so to give you a representative idea of what these will look like, I've included some additional information, next page. So this is a similar design for a single unit of the cabins. And Walters would like to combine them into, so that each, each representative box is actually a double unit, but still has a porch and a pitched roof like this. So we're, we're having that drawn and designed so that it, it looks favorable, but it looks similar to what you're looking at now. And next page. Then we have on our site plan, four villas up by the cabins, and then later, Lakeview cabins in Phase Two. And we anticipate them being a two-story, modern lake house look, similar to these. And if you'll, next slide. Here's a sample, very simple, three-bedroom layout for the villas. Next page. Our Phase Two proposal involves the removal of the cabins and then construction of a hotel with amenities. Those amenities would include a pool, gift shop, gym, spa, additional office space, and additional parking. And then would incorporate the lakeside villas. So you'll notice in our zoning, where we asked for this zoning, so I just want to be clear, we don't imagine putting a lifetime fitness in the middle of this property. We just imagine having a hotel gym that's got some ellipticals, some, you know, just a small treadmill, just type of keeping active while you're there, but not a huge workout facility. The same for the spa and the beauty salon. Because we have two venues, we know that they support hair, nails, the entire spa treatment. And we want to be able to offer those services, but we don't actually imagine that we're going to run a supercut out of this. It's going to be for the patrons of the venue and the hotel. And so I hope that gives some, some backdrop to an explanation for, for the uses that we're seeking. Next page. Here is the diagram of Phase Two. And so you'll see that the villas have been removed. And number seven, which is the brown structure, it's the hotel, and it's now incorporated into those venues. And the amenities are added. And there's also, you'll notice number 14 is a, possibly either a Phase Two or a Phase Three that incorporates 40 residential condos. That while it wouldn't be restricted to people over 55, we imagine that it caters to a retirement group that's interested in having those amenities of living in a one- or two-bedroom condo where their condo's cleaned once or twice a week by the hotel staff. They've got two restaurants on site. They get to enjoy the, the, the environment of the festivities that go on there for people who enjoy that. So that's, that's the type of resident that we imagine would occupy those spaces. Next page. This is just an artist's rendering of what the, the entry of one of the venues would be. Off to the side, and then, next slide. This would be that side view from the property line. Next slide. And, and this is the beginning of our, our design for what we want the hotel to be. You know that we've proposed a four-story hotel, so this isn't it. But this is the design that we have in mind. And we started with a much edgier design and decided to go something a little more hill country. And this is the direction we're leaning for that design. Next slide. And so at the end of the day, it's always a question of, you know, who's giving and who's taking. So we just want to talk about what does the city gain? And the city gains ad valorem taxes from this property, which will increase over time with these improvements. They'll enjoy sales tax revenue. And so I've opted to give you some actual 2019 revenue from a comparable property with two venues and similar lodgings. And in 2019, the venue rentals from those, from that one property was 1.52 million dollars. In-house catering, 600,000. Bar and alcohol, 450,000. Lodging for 20, 28 units is a slightly more than that, 340,000 dollars. You know what your sales tax gain on that is, but I just wanted to provide you historical data, and it shows true performance. These aren't projections, these aren't something that Keith and I thought of last night. And these are from audited financials. The other thing that I'd like to remind you is that these are revenue gains without significant infrastructure drains. We're not building a subdivision that has numerous houses and children that need to go to school and dogs that have to be managed by the dog catcher and significant, you know, whatever the, you know, other needs are. These are, this is a vacation site where people come in, they spend their money, and they leave. And we found over and over in the communities that we serve, that these, you know, there's, it brings activity throughout the week where people, you know, in smaller groups, of course, are shopping. They're shopping for venues, they're looking at the town, they're having lunch, they're buying gas. But certainly, when these events take place, either corporate events during the week or weddings and other activities on the weekends, these are people who, you know, they're, it's a destination event, but certainly, they, you know, they, they, they visit the Walgreens. They, they eat lunch, they, they do a variety of other activities that also benefits the other businesses here besides the employment opportunity. the employment opportunities that are afforded at the venues and the resorts. And what do we want from the city? We want the city to provide water and sewer, infrastructure necessary and adequate for all phases of the project to a single tap or meter location on the property where thereafter Walters will construct their own utilities on site. They want city services such as police and fire response. They want a ten-year rebate of their collected hotel tax. And zoning sufficient to support all of the resort uses that we've discussed here. Next slide. And Mayor, and members of the council, as well as all the citizens who took time to come tonight, I do appreciate your time and consideration and your comments. We want to be good neighbors. We all know that we are in the county, these are things that could be constructed in the county, but that's really not what we're here for. We're here because we want to be good neighbors. We want to contribute, we want to participate, we want to add value. We want to build a first-class resort. And we welcome your comments, positive and negative, to help us achieve that result.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll leave the slide up, so in case any council members have questions that I can go back to, and then when you tell me to take it down, I'll go ahead and close it out.
Okay. So questions, comments? Council? All right, well, Aaron? Hold on, Aaron. Yes, Frank?
Is this where we make our comments about what we've got in the packet?
Yeah, and actually, I was going to backtrack a little bit and let staff make their comments on what, you know, what they have done with the group, Walters weddings, what they see so far.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would go to, I think it's slide twenty-two? Or twenty-one? Okay. So, and Roy, I believe, is on the line with me, and he can chime in. You know, we, the staff from, me from the legal perspective, and Roy from the planning perspective, and also our city engineer from, you know, looking at the public works aspects of this, have evaluated kind of the proposal. You know, we've start, we started this process some time ago, and this newest proposal has a lot more elements to it than the previous version. So the comments we have really kind of are focused on what impacts this particular project has at really kind of Phase Two, Phase Three level. And we've discussed with Laura kind of the questions and concerns that we have regarding buffer zones. As you'll see, the number six down there, there's a fifty-foot buffer zone and kind of what we would, from a staff level, expect to see to provide buffering to the neighboring residences. We've discussed traffic impact analysis and when that would really be important because there will, you know, if they get to the Phase Two of this project, you know, there will be quite a bit more traffic that will impact this site. And then, of course, Lake Shore Boulevard as a whole. The water and wastewater infrastructure that's needed to serve this site, once you have Phase Two in play, and in Phase Three with the additional residential units and the hotel itself, will be significant. And so we've encouraged the applicant to really evaluate closely what those LUE, Living Unit Equivalent, needs will be. We looked at and asked them to really kind of consider how the feasibility of the cabins, as you see in Phase Two and Three, those cabins are gone. But the cabins, when they exist in Phase One, would require water and wastewater infrastructure, installation, you know, across multiple spots, you know, across this sixteen-plus-acre site. So that, we've asked them to evaluate carefully because that is something that, you know, is going to change, and there will be infrastructure that'll, that would be either abandoned in place or have to be removed, depending on what construction's going to occur in that area after that. You know, we've looked at the documents themselves, you know, I won't, you know, if you have particular thoughts, I know the mayor's already expressed concern about the 380 agreement. I have not negotiated, if you will, any particular terms on that. It is appropriate for a hot tax abatement, but the length of the abatement, when you would want to enter into that agreement, that is also something that's certainly within the purview of the council to consider. The actual, part of the documents, what I have also done this week with Laura was to kind of send her a sample of a development agreement annexation documents that we, that the council considered recently, that we found to be successful. And so the, with the goal being to revise that annexation and development agreement so that, such that it would more closely mirror in form and format and in substance what you have considered previously for a similar project. And so during this next week or two, we will be working to revise the documents and to work on the details. And it's those details that we're hoping that council will provide some additional input and guidance, if you have preferences on how you would like to see this, the process move forward. I believe, you know, it's, at least from the mayor's perspective, the 380 would have to, your recommendations that the 380 comes later. So if there are other aspects of that, that you have a preference on, or questions about the project for the applicant, that we can help flesh out the details, those would be the things we would be looking for from you this evening, so that staff can finalize something that is more in final form for you.
Yeah, so I know, you know, the development agreement and annexation, you know, that's some stuff that can come to council for us to consider. But beyond that, you know, everything else needs to go through our planning and zoning before it comes to council. So, you know, the concepts, our two-step process for approving the plans, and all that needs to go through planning and zoning before it comes to council. So, you know, there's, this is a process that's going to be, you know, at least four steps. You're talking development agreement, annexation, going through the two-step process. It's a thorough process, but it's designed to make sure that we have all the information that we think is necessary to approve a project of, you know, of this size. So, you know, my advice is just, you know, make sure you're working with Roy and Aaron and, and whatever else the council provides as far as what they are looking for in each phase, each step of this process. You know, again, you know, Aaron just stated, we had just went through the process on another development that was really nice. And so they've got some very good recommendations on how this process should go.
Thank you.
Just work with them, so. Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laura, I find your plan and your design very interesting. You put in an awful lot of stuff on that acreage, but I do believe that there's probably room for all that. The big thing that we were talking about tonight is the 380 agreement. I've got a couple of questions. You did clarify that what you're asking for is a ten-year abatement of the hot tax. The hotel is down the road, a year, two years, three years? What are you anticipating on that?
We're expecting it to be constructed by the year three, but probably started sometime after two years.
Okay, so the 380 agreement, you'll want to start when the hotel is completed?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, my opinion is that with the fact that what you're asking for is not a sales tax abatement or ad valorem tax abatement, that we've got a lot of time to get the 380 done. I think it's very reasonable to ask for the hot tax abatement. I think that's something that I definitely could support. I think probably other members of the council could also support. The ten years is a little longer than what I would like, but I understand that this is quite an undertaking, and I do believe that it will be of significant revenue production for our community. But what I would like to see, my personal take on this, is I would like to see a lot more towards the development plan and getting things through our P and Z, and getting the annexation and the other steps moving along before we get into the 380. But I think your 380 request is very reasonable, something that I think that I could probably agree with.
Thank you, sir. My only response to timing on that is we certainly want to be respectful of the process, and we understand it. We presented our zoning perhaps a little prematurely, but we just wanted to get our cards on the table for what we were asking. We absolutely respect that we need to go to P and Z, and we'll certainly do that. And then upon a vote from P and Z, bring that to the council. I guess, I guess my real issue for bringing the 380 to you is we want to be honest now about what we're asking, and we want that commitment from the city so that once we're annexed and we're committed, then that we have that assurance that we will be able to get that abatement. And, I mean, I know I'm speaking to the choir, but, you know, the reality is, this hot tax and even sales tax, from when we're in the county, it's just, it's funny money, right? We're not collecting it, you're not getting it, and nobody's paying it, it's just not happening. And that's the value of us being in the city, for both of us, is that now we can collect the sales tax and pay it to you, and we can collect the hot tax and have it rebated to us as well. So we hope that that's a win-win for everyone, and we can get a commitment on that in connection with annexation.
So looking, I'm looking at this plan, see, number six has that buffer zone. Is that just a, between building number, is it number one? Yeah, building number one. And number six, there's fifty feet, that buffer zone, is there, is there a physical buffer at all, or is it just a space buffer?
It's actually a space buffer, just to show that we're meeting the fifty-foot requirement outlined in the regulations. And so it does, it is the circumference of the property. This week, we did speak with the, with the city, and they advocated for a more physical buffer. There is quite a bit of landscaping, and certainly, we were even going to add some more trees and bushes there. So visually, it is a good, strong buffer. But for the sake of neighboring existing structures that we consider erecting a six-foot wall on a property line that has existing structures within so many feet, which would, which would most particularly affect that one residence. And I've spoken with Walters, and they're absolutely willing to add that to their plan.
Yeah, depending on the volume of people going in and out of that facility there, you know, it would probably be beneficial to have something separating, a physical barrier separating the two properties, so that the residents aren't having to constantly view people going in and out, and the people going in and out are not constantly, you know, eyeballing their house. Not to, not to mention any kind of noise. I know a six-foot would only reduce the noise so much, but anything that could, would help, you know? I got a question about number fourteen, too. Residential condominiums. You know, I like the idea of a residential condominium, but with the, how many weddings are you looking at doing on a weekly basis here? Is it realistic that people are going to want to live in a facility where there's constant noise and traffic and, and, you know, parties going on? You've got eleven is resort pool. Or is it realistic that people are going to want to live where there's constant wedding parties going on?
We have found that they do. Our venues, some of them are in neighborhoods, and people do live around them. We, we have quite a bit of interest. And quite frankly, at our current, the Alana, where we're drafting our construction documents for our hotel, we've had several people ask if we would sell some of our suites as condos. That's just not an interest that we have at that particular property. But, but we've had strong feedback. Now, that is one of the reasons we've considered it for a Phase Three instead of at the same time as the hotel, so that we have time to, we are a fairly conservative company, so we want to have time to test that concept and get all, get the data, and make sure that it's viable. If it is, great. If it's not, the plans are drawn such that the hotel doesn't have a gaping hole if it's missing. If it's there, it's great, and if it's not, that'll just be green space, and we're okay with that.
Have y'all put any numbers to these plans to see what, how much of the, of the ground that you're actually going to be covering up with pavements, pavements and concretes and buildings, and you know what your impervious cover?
I believe that it's going to be, that we will, we will not meet the sixty percent requirement, we're going to probably be closer to forty percent.
That's all I got at the moment. Anybody else? Yes? Frank?
I've got fifty-eight questions, clarifications, outright denials. My intention is to get with staff, hopefully as early as Monday. Get on the same page with the staff. I've heard and seen many of their comments already, and I agree with those. But I don't want to go through fifty-eight questions tonight. I'm opposed to a hot tax abatement. The current document that I'm reading in five point one says that it's twenty years at a hundred percent abatement, and so that's an example of some that I think could easily be made, but there's, there's probably a lot of them. And then finally, the way to get approved in a hurry is to get on board with
the way to get approved in a hurry is to get on board with the staff. If they're not happy, the chances are the council isn't going to be happy. One of my concerns about what's happened in the past on this side and others is that we get a lot of stuff, the council gets stuff relatively late and it's not ready for prime time. And so at Hope, how do you get them ready for prime time to get it approved? Get squared away with the staff. When they say it's a green light, the council's going to say it's green. If they're pointing out a bunch of red lights, I would suggest that it's not going to get approved. Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else? The numbers, the squares are really small, so I can't really see who's got their hands up and stuff.
Mayor, let me ask one big question about what the applicant has said. Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with the mayor's point about 380. And I agree with the point about it going to P and Z before we get the development. What that means is that the development will not be part, the zoning or the development would not be part of the DA, correct?
Is that a question for me? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure.
Well, I mean, if I thought I heard you're okay with it going to P and Z first, that means that if we approve the DA before you come into the city, land use or the development proposal will not be part of the development agreement.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I believe that zoning is a legislative function that has to go through P and Z and back through the city council. And so, and I respect that process. Now, we are requesting in our development agreement that if we don't get the zoning and we don't reach an agreement on the 380 agreement, that we be de-annexed so that we can construct in the county.
I understand what you said. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's not much different from the last, the last property that was brought to us. You know, they, in their development agreement, they were requesting certain zoning and if it wasn't approved, that they would seek dis-annexation as well. The only thing different with this one is the 380 agreement being included at the same time as the zoning request, so. And we can discuss them both at the same time. I just usually, you know, I would like to address the zoning, I mean, the zoning and the plan first, you know, to see if, you know, if the project's going to go through before we discuss the 380. But we could always do it at the same time if that's the request, but.
And Mr. Mayor, it's not that we have to have it exactly the same time. If it helps to bifurcate it between, you know, two different council meetings and they're split two weeks apart, or it's not exactly two weeks, but we're okay with that. We're just not looking to put our 380 agreement off until phase two construction just because we kind of need to know where we are.
Okay, yeah, we can work, we can work on that. Anyone else from council?
I pretty much agree with Frank. You know, I would like to see it go through the process. I'd like to see them on the same page with the staff. I'd like to see P and Z involved in the whole process. Because they're very knowledgeable people also and we could then have a clearer understanding. I'd like to see what the traffic study looks like so that we make sure that everything is in its proper place.
Right, and I believe, you know, Aaron and Roy are on top of it. We, when we pass this new two-step process, you know, they're on top of it now and they know what council is going to want to see. So, you know, if Walters will go through, work with staff and make sure everything is ready and set, go to planning and zoning, so planning and zoning can see it and then come to us. I think that's the reason we put this process in place is so that we're not getting applicants, applications that are missing things and we're having to deny it or kick it back or send it back to planning and zoning for additional details and.
Correct.
So. Yes, Frank?
Just clarification on your point, which I agree with. But what I think our applicant has told us is that they are going to include land use, the development, in the development agreement before it goes to P and Z.
Laura, is that, is he correct in that statement?
I don't believe so. We have provided you our sample, which is, we're still working with the city on to complete our request for zoning because we want you to know what it is. And because we are asking that if we do not get approved our zoning through P and Z and through the council, as this process progresses, we are going to seek to be de-annexed. Really, that's so that if you look at it and you say, you know what, in my wildest dreams, I'm never going to approve this? Let's just talk about that sooner than later. But if when you look at it and you look at the totality of the project, you say, this might be doable. Let's see how the process goes, then we want to continue to invest those resources. We've already authorized the traffic impact study so that we can provide that information to you. And then we'd like to annex in, we'd like to go through the P and Z process to obtain our, to discuss our zoning, obtain the vote and bring it to the council for a thumbs up, thumbs down, whatever is we need to do there. So I, I'm not sure that we're disagreeing or we are agreeing. I don't think that you can get zoning outside of going through P and Z into the council. I don't think we can bypass that step and we're not asking to bypass that step. We're just trying to fully disclose.
Got it.
So Frank, are you looking at the annexation and zoning as like the last step? You know, the development agreement and the plan? You're looking for all that to go through planning and zoning council before we discuss?
You gotta, well, hang on. Mr. Mayor, you have to annex in. They have to go through the annexation process before our zoning, P and Z can make a decision on zoning. If they're not in the city, they don't, our P and Z doesn't have, can't consider it. So that's kind of step one, so.
Anexation, what do we give them, a TR1? Before it goes to P and Z?
Well, they're coming in asking for commercial. So Roy, where you want to chime in and tell them?
Yeah, that, depending on the timing, you're correct. It may not ever get, we may not ever have the chance to create a map that says that, but that is what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I mean, what you're describing, it's a new DA that'll delete a number of places in it that has the council approving a land plan.
You are correct. And we've talked about that. There's a, and they may get most of it done, but you know, having it, everything worked out where the land planned is capable of being blessed is, will, that'll be an uphill battle, I'll put it to you that way.
Well, let me just read this. Aaron, you know what I'm getting at?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Okay, yes, Arch?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Did I understand that the 380 agreement would be part and parcel to the request for being annexed?
Arch, the way I understand it, it's going to, it would be either part of it or at the same time. It may be a separate agenda item, but I think the timing that they're looking for is going to be concurrent.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have to discuss whether it's going to be actually part of it or if it's just going to be a concurrent second agenda item. But I know, like Laura stated, you know, there's things that they're looking for to be agreed upon. And if not, you know, they would request to be de-annexed. So, you know, we have to just, we'll have to decide whether we're going to hear them both at the same time or separate and if each one of them is contingent on the other and.
But my question there would be, who sets the ground rules for that?
It's addressed in the development agreement.
Okay.
It's a condition that's written into the development agreement.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm good for now.
I'm sorry, David, what'd you say?
No, I'm good for now.
If we're at a, if we're at a pause with the council, I do have a citizen who has requested prior, I'm sorry if I pronounce this wrong, John Alice Smith, are you still with us tonight?
I am, and you did real well on that name.
Oh, thank you. What would you like to share with us tonight?
Well, thanks a lot for your service and for staying so late on these issues. I'm actually here helping a group of residents in, out on the point who have a lot of concerns about this development. And their first question to each of you is, how would you like this moving in next to your house? These are all homes that have been built for 20 or more years in a residential area that has deed restrictions for single-family houses. As you look at slide 21 in that, in Laura's plan over there at that buffer, I look right across that buffer and it looks like there's a house with a pool. Do you think a six-foot wall is going to keep that pool from overlooking a four-story hotel down on the property? I think, I think it was right when we want to know who's giving and who's taking. And I think the environment's giving when I look at that 40% impervious cover on a point that's just a beautiful area on this lake, the runoff. The other effects on the environment are not something I think anyone should take lightly. The city utilities, limited water and other resources are now, maybe there isn't a taking of schools and those issues, but there's sure going to be a lot of product, water and other utilities that are going to be sent from your citizens to this project. But I think the biggest issue is that this point has been a hot mess. If I, I've only been involved in disputes involving this point for about the last eight years and I am here early with the group who asked me to help. Last time, we were intervening in defeat of a condemnation, which we did. And that's a lot of money for everybody to spend when this is a private dispute. The city may benefit from this, but you're being brought in to try to weigh on the side of a dispute that's really in this neighborhood. It's always been in this neighborhood. This neighborhood has not been happy with nature's point when on the end of the, on the end of the neighborhood, and I'm sure Ms. Lewis is right that it wasn't Mr. Walters who had the type of events that caused these neighbors to meet the attendees when they were urinating on the trees outside their property. This is just not a suitable place for this project. And we hope that you take a good look at whether the city wants to get involved in a project that's got a big dispute with the neighbors. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, anytime there's zoning requests and annexations and stuff, that's always, always something that we as council and legal and staff have to look at and consider. With anything, I know that, you know, you mentioned the deed restrictions. You know, that's, that's between the parties that entered into the deed restrictions and not so much the city. But we do, we do consider all the other aspects about whose backyard it's going to be in and, you know, traffic and all that stuff. So that's why, that's why we have changed our process to make it a more thorough process with the two-step process and everything that we consider.
Well, I, it's not an easy job and I really respect that. And I just think that whatever is going to happen and the money the city has to outlay and the time and effort in looking at annexation is all going to be for naught if deed restrictions and the private dispute that will arrive, arise between the owners enforcing those prevent this development from ever happening. It might be better to steer away from it from the start and that's why I'm here.
All right, thank you. All right, Frank?
Mr. Mayor.
I see Frank's hand, I'm sorry. Yes, Frank?
Mayor, you've been, you've been describing a two-step process. And so, Roy, if this thing looks to me like it's going to be one step, it's got to be a concept, correct?
It is, the two-step is an option of the applicant. You are correct.
Yeah, looks, this one looks like a one-step deal.
Yeah, there's, there's some narrative issues to make the images and the narrative match, but those should be doable.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. A mayor is probably not going to be two times. It's probably going to be one time through the detailed plan for the zoning.
Okay. David?
One of the things that was presented was if the city does not annex this property, then they want to deal with Travis County directly? Is that the case?
That is an option. Laura?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Frank?
For issues that have been raised early in Aaron's discussion about infrastructure, the IA, wastewater, they're going to have to plat and they're going to come to the city. And if they don't get annexed, they're still going to have to plat with us and those infrastructures are still going to get addressed by the city.
All right.
Frank, does that, does that mean that that goes to P and Z at that time?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Yes. It will be, there will not be land use decisions. In other words, where the buildings are, what the uses of the buildings will be, we won't have land use approval, but we will have infrastructure-related issues, the layout of lots and those kind of things, standards that are in our sub-rig subdivision regulations.
And actually, Mr. Robbins, I think where that main entry is, if I'm not mistaken, that little piece is already in the city.
That's right.
Yeah, that's 130, yeah.
And that's where a lot of the impact obviously will be.
All right, anybody else? All right, is there anybody else in the audience that did not sign up that would like to ask a question or make a comment? All right. Well, unless I hear anything else, we will move on to number 10. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much. May I be excused?
You may.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. Thanks for staying with us.
You too. You guys are hard and long. I've got to give it to you.
Is that still possible to talk about this construction?
Well, we did, we haven't quite moved to number 10, but go ahead, real quick.
All I can think of is, here we go again. How many developments have we seen now that don't work out? We have a, a big shopping center that, with nobody in it almost. We've got a fire station that never got built. It's still out there. But aside from that, this is going to be construction going on for three years. That means you're going to have heavy equipment running in and out of that area periodically for three years. And the, the wear and tear on the city is going to be, is going to be considerable. It's going to cost, somebody's going to have to fix the roads. Somebody has to police the thing. Otherwise, if you just leave equipment and material out there, people are going to, it's going to, it's liable to get stolen. I think that you should have, or demand a completion bond, so that if for some reason or other they go so far and then decide they don't want to spend any more money, the bond kicks in and pays to have it either completed or changed back to what it was before. But I don't think you're really considering the amount of disruption that's going to go on for three years. Not only that, but what is it going to do that, you're going to put a four-story building in an area we're not even supposed to have more than two stories? I just, I, I'm astounded. I truly am astounded. I think this is another great-sounding idea that is wonderful for the, for the developer, but is going to be a bur, a massive burden on the city, and we're going to regret it. And that's all I have to say at this point.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we'll go to agenda item number 10. And that is our city manager report. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple items I wanted to point out. At the last meeting, someone had a question about the number of budget amendments that have happened, and wanted to know what the total budget amendments on the year are, and then relative to what the actual budget is. So we pulled up those numbers. The total number for the year is 1.383,672, so 1,383,672. That includes additional funds on street rehabilitation, the town center development, which was the library and city hall expansion. We increased those numbers. We actually increased that a couple of times, and added interior design for the library, the new street improvement project, which was 550,000, the water line to the city park, the leak detection survey, and then the public works break room projects. So of the $28 million adopted FY21 budget, the 1.383,672 represents approximately 5% of the budget that has been amended during the course of the fiscal year. And so I just, I mentioned that last meeting, I wanted to bring that out. It's not something that's a, that's a formalized document that you put online, but we do put the amendments online, and then someone can do the math backwards. But, you know, part of this new system that we're looking at, Mayor, on this transparency module that we've been working on budgeting, would be able to show individuals those numbers comparative to the operating budget, and I think that's going to be a, a positive thing moving forward. The other item I wanted to mention, we already said that we're scheduling the special council meeting for next Thursday, the 23rd, at 5 o'clock. That's for the PID. That's for the final item on the Lake Side at DeSara PID. We'd also like to schedule a budget workshop. Potentially, I'd like to schedule that next week. We could schedule it prior to that council special meeting, but we would like to have a, a two-hour window. We probably won't use two hours, but I'd like to go through some of the items that we've looked at and the changes we've made on the, on the budget module so that we can get input from council. So that's just a request, Mayor, and you can, just, if you give us some informal direction, we could schedule that time.
Yes, Frank?
Josh, have the numbers stopped moving around?
Mayor, the numbers have stopped over the last three hours. I have not adjusted one number again. Tomorrow, I plan to come into the office a little bit, and I will try not to significantly change something, but what we've presented as of right now on the online module is balanced budgets for all the funds. So, yes, sir, to answer the question, they have stopped for the time being.
It won't stop until September 30th.
Well, yeah, yeah, the point is, though, that it's pretty close to what we'll be talking about by, by Thursday.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Well, I know I'm going to, right off the bat, I'm going to suggest a separate day than Thursday for the budget. I've got a lot on my plate on that Thursday, so.
Mayor, I'll be here all week, so whatever you can come up with, you just tell me, and we'll get it scheduled, but we have to advertise it as well, so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm good with Wednesday. Wednesday is, you know, the 22nd's really good for me. That works for me.
I see Frank, and I think Dick motioned as well, Mayor. I could set that for Wednesday at 5:00.
I'm fine with that offer.
All right, yeah, you've got a consensus.
Okay, I'll work with Sandra, and we'll get that set. Mayor, it'll be a, it'll be a FY21 budget workshop. You will not have any documents to go with it, but it'll be a budget workshop Wednesday, the 22nd, at 5:00. It'll be scheduled for two hours.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, that's all I had.
All righty. Future meetings. Number 11, consider our schedule and items for future council meetings. So one, we've already discussed, one future council meeting, special session on the 23rd, and a budget, and two, I guess, a budget meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd. Do we have anything? Any requests for agenda items? I am going to go with the request from, we have, what, three citizens request something for August 6th, so. I'm going to ask that that be put on the agenda for the August 6th meeting for us to, to discuss and consider. And that is adding citizens to the Planning and Zoning Subcommittee.
Add that as discussion, Mayor?
Um, well, I don't know the, the, I don't know what Planning and Zoning's timeframe is. I don't know if they're looking at bringing it back on the 13th, because that's their next meeting, correct?
It won't be that soon, sir.
Okay. So.
Okay, I'll, I'll put discussion, possible action.
I think we could produce discussion and possible action, because I don't know, I think we can discuss it and hash out whether we want people on it or not, and take action that same day.
Okay, I'm sending that to Sandra now, so she'll have it.
Yes, Frank?
Is this the land use map thing?
Yes, yes. Anybody else? All right, well, if that is it, I will call this meeting adjourned at 9:16 PM.
Have a great one.
Aaron, are you in the office?